Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
I'm going to be called.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Two-Hill.
Yes.
Okay, ready to go. All right, council, any additions to this evening's agenda?
Just the one that we talked about it.
Okay, Doug, I'm going to schedule you to talk about civility in public discourse, and that will be during our committee of board reports. Thank you. And we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the April 8th council meeting. Approval of minutes for the April 12th special council meeting. Approval of the April 19th payroll of $110,756.41. Approval of the March Finance Report. Approval of the Wayfinding Commission minutes. Approval of the Library Board minutes. Approval of Beautification Commission minutes. The resolution of employment and park and recreation for part-time employees for the summer. We have a resolution of classification of personnel in the Water Department. Matt Tiller having received his Grade II classification for distribution. We have approval of claims, the amount of $257,567.32, of which DC Concrete and Construction were totaled $129,434.14. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Maybe this would be a good time. Yeah, so would you move to approve? Okay, motion to approve by Rasmussen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. I know we have a discussion point from, Council, Two-Hill.
On the minutes from April 12th, the special meeting, we had voted on page seven, it was brought up, I think, by Dr. Fagan, about the spacing of, which I think most people took as the antennas. And what we actually voted on was just spacing of new poles. It didn't do anything with the spacing of putting antennas on existing poles in town. If that was everybody's intent, then we can let it go with that. If the intent was to limit the spacing of the antennas by 1,000 feet, I think that's probably something that should go to the committee and find out if, number one, that's going to cause dead zones, or, number two, I don't even know if it's possible, if they're going to have to boost the signal to make it effective, which is kind of productive to the whole thing, I think they want to pass in the first place. I don't think they want a stronger signal. So that, I guess that was my only issue. The way we voted on it, we were only voting on new poles put in the ground.
Right.
But it didn't have anything to do with the antennas.
And the minutes don't reflect our decision accurately.
But they reflect the decision.
Yes.
And I think, you know, for the purpose of the minutes, I think we have, you know, that was the vote that was taken, even if it was misunderstood. So I think that needs to stand. And I think Council on Two-Hill's recommendation is that the committee take a look at this quickly to determine, you know, what the, what would be possible there before we get back to looking at-
What the ramifications of 1,000 feet and spacing would be.
Right.
So the change that is in place and that will stand will be, we change the 250 to 1,000 for spacing of new poles.
Correct.
That's what we voted for.
Yes, and that's what-
Correct.
That's, yes.
Right.
So, yeah, unless the council wanted to open up the entire discussion right now with a motion of reconsideration, and that's probably not advisable at this point because we haven't done the research, as Councilman has said, about distances and where we really can go with that. So I would just recommend that we take that as a recommendation to the committee-
Right.
-to look into that, and as we do, either amend this resolution or create a permanent ordinance, that that information is well researched.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? If not, please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Two-Hill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, but I need to abstain from the special meeting minutes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, council, we'll move on to our resolutions and action items and ordinances. The first is the approval of the drawing specifications and form of contract for engineers and engineers estimate for the cost of improvements for the taxiway. Tea hangers Phase 1 and Phase 2. And I know we have a bid opening this week, Melanie, I think, the 24th. Anything the council needs to know about those prepared documents?
What's changed? So, we've talked before that we did not receive any bids on the last, a month ago, when we went to bid opening on this project or on these two projects. So what we have done, the things we've changed between the last bidding and this bid opening is we've combined it so that it is one single project, so that you have, the two contractors aren't having to work together in their schedules. That was one of the concerns contractors brought up. The other thing is we've extended the completion date to June 1st of 2020. It allows it to still get within the fiscal year, but allows the contractor to be a little more flexible with their schedule. They still have 68 days to complete all of the work, but that 68 days can occur anytime between now and June 1st. So we did have two contractors attend a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting, so we're hopeful we'll at least get some bids this time.
Okay, great, thank you, Melanie. So first, we'll open a public hearing on the specifications, ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to approving the specifications, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, council, we'll move to a tax abatement application for Paul Carter at 1,006A Prairie Lakes Drive. And this is a residential request for a total amount of $133,500. So, and again, this would be for a percentage of that, so entertain a motion to approve the tax abatement application.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Council, if you looked at this, I wanted to just circle back on it. If you looked at the application, you'll also see that the original building permit was pulled for $45,000, and home was built for $133,500 in value. We have a pretty lenient building permit process and fees associated with it, but I don't know if contractors are taking advantage of our system, but I think they paid $65 for the permit, and if they had declared a value above what, Rebecca?
Is it just materials?
It's custom materials.
Custom materials for the project.
Yeah. If it went up to the 133, I think it would have been $85.
It would have been $85. So anyway, it's still, it's an area where we probably use a little bit of scrutiny to see that we're matching what it is that we're approving in a tax abatement. Then we'll move on, council, to easements and land acquisition. We have three for us tonight, and I think our city attorney, John Marci, will let us know how we're doing with each of these.
Doing great.
Good.
Yes, I think I understand what Melanie's telling me. There's only one other easement that wasn't obtained, and they decided you didn't need it. Okay, so this will get us to a point where we can tell, probably within the next two months, the USDA that we have all of the land interests we need for Step 2. So I was concerned, as the council was, with some holdouts, three or four, for the last six months, that we were going to be in court until next October or Christmas, just with the steps that go through an eminent domain process. So it's worked out well that there's been some negotiating going on, and I think we had a, probably a heavy hammer swinging in the air with Ayers and Cooney in the background on one of these situations. Well, actually, in three of these situations. So, anyway, we've got two easements that involve a fairly substantial amount of money, and they are the Hersberg Trust, and that's Orchard Lake subdivision, parcels 50, 51, and 52. And the purchase agreement on both of the Hersberg acquisitions have some special provisions that are enunciated in paragraphs 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, including specially described organic planting of seeds and so forth. And there's a three-page instruction sheet on how that's to occur, which we've made part of the attachment. So some of it is conditions that the owner/seller asked to have as part of what was negotiated, and we couldn't see any reason not to accommodate them, to the extent that it benefits the owner to do it that way. More power to the owner if they have something that's a little different than some of the other spots. The price was right. So the land values themselves, they're still consistent with what we had for appraisals. And then there is, there is some extra cost associated with these conditions, but it's not the large cost. So if you look at the one for Joel and Linda Joy Hersberger trustees of their revocable trust, there is a purchase agreement. The terms at paragraph 14 to 18 are mentioned in the resolution approving this. There is a copy of their easement, which they have executed as far as the permit, sanitary sewer easement, and the temporary easement. And this, also, there are some attachments that reflect that this is an administrative settlement. And what that means, you haven't had very many of these. I think you've had the full run of things now as far as this wastewater project. You've had administrative settlement, which means that there's some reasons why, under the Iowa code, you can go beyond what your general range of appraisal is. And the administrative settlement allows you to go to things where there's a justification for a variance in the price, or there's about seven or eight other reasons why it's good to settle this, instead of get tied down in something that either causes delays or additional costs. So in the resolution, there is a place where I mentioned that there is an administrative settlement. And beyond that, the detail as far as $19,687 plus $100, which is going towards their title expense, is what you'll be paying them for the permanent 2/3 of an acre and 1.2 acres of temporary easement. So it's a good-sized easement. I recommend its approval, and I'll answer any question on it.
Any questions, council? So this would be the Joel and Joy Hersberg-
Yes.
-easement, and again, that's $19,687 plus the $100. So entertain a motion to approve the land acquisition easement. So moved. Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
The second acquisition is Aaron Hersberg and Melanie Hersberg at 1,000 Walton Road. Parcels 48, or 46, 47, 48, 49. Again, it's a, it's a good-sized acquisition. Again, it's an administrative settlement. The dollar amount on this also includes the specialized seeding procedures, but the dollar amount for a bigger easement, almost an acre of permanent easement and 3.61 acres of temporary easement is $27,863. On page, page 3, a paragraph or two above where we've got the payment amounts and so forth, again, in parentheses, there's a mention of administrative settlement. And again, it's because there are some special conditions and circumstances that make this more than some of our other easement acquisitions.
John, would you explain the administrative settlement also to the council?
Well, ordinarily, we've got a couple of steps we do in a Title VI, eminent domain acquisition. We go out, we have a value placed on the property. We do it on a larger piece of property, there's an appraisal. We have a policy in place for the last five years that has to do with things that don't exceed $10,000 in value. Our city administrator has some discretion working with our engineers in determining whether the value that's calculated by our land acquisition people is reasonable, rather than spend $3,000, $4,000 on an appraisal for properties where we may only be offering $3,000 or $4,000. We use that policy repeatedly. But in these bigger acquisitions, you sometimes have several things you have to do. Administrative settlements, they take into consideration the range we started out with, which is our general policy, how much was it worth? And then if we had to go farther, sometimes we'll have a war of appraisals with the owner. That hasn't been the situation in anything for most of what you've seen on these wastewater projects, except some people went to the extent of having arborists give arborist opinions about the values of trees and so forth. So we did, we did get into a little bit of a push and shove over those for a while, but you get into things where you have differences of opinions in the appraisals. You maybe have something about the value of the property that's unique to everything else that we're trying to acquire. You have to take into consideration what it's going to cost to go through condemnation. You take into consideration what the time factor is, whether it's going to slow up your bidding process or lose you a year in construction. We've been there on all of those things already on this wastewater stuff. We settled one that was the only one we've had so far in all of these parcels related to Step 1 and 2. When we did Lila Williams about two and a half years ago, we did the last thing that the code authorizes, which is a legal settlement, which basically, at that point, you're looking at the advice of council, that you don't want this thing to linger through trial and appeal, because in that situation, we determined that having that property for the site for our treatment facility versus waiting a year or two might cost us somewhere several hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars difference in our bidding timetable. So we made a decision there based on the advice of your council to go ahead and get it settled also. We did all of the other things you usually see in that. We had administrative settlement discussions. The land acquisition people went out, tried to find comparable trade-off property for the owner. They came back, we started out at like $167,000. They came back with a replacement property that was valued at $339,000. That kind of gutted our arguments about our appraisals being better than theirs, but as far as what you do at that point, you figure out, how much more are we going to have to negotiate? They wanted $550,000. We didn't want to pay $400,000. I think we settled at $399. And in the end, we had to have that. So we went through the third step, which would be one step beyond administrative settlement. But the state code, it gives you these things you can also do.
But John, who, just to keep it simply, who is it that determines that amount in terms of the administrative settlement? What is-
The administrative settlements usually get talked over with the land acquisition agent.
Right.
And if they think there are considerations that are beyond what our appraisals support, they will probably talk that over with Melanie also. And at that point, I'm usually standing on the sidelines, just waiting to see if it works to add a little-
So this is, so to understand, so the council understands this is something that's probably a little above what was originally recommended?
It is. It's a few thousand dollars above what JCG recommended initially, but it's reasonable, and we still have considerable money left over as far as our acquisition pot on this project, Ellen.
I wouldn't call it considerable.
All right. We just have some money.
Okay. All right, so the amount of, for the second one, Aaron Hersberg, then $27,863, and the $100 additional for filing fees.
And the conditions in paragraph 14 to 18, because I expect we'll be watching those at some point with our contractor to make sure that the seed's right.
Yep. Council, any questions on this easement acquisition? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay.
The third acquisition is 1212 Cody Circle, Catherine Else. It's a, again, slightly above where we were as far as our appraisal, but this one was the one I was afraid we were going to be waiting on next fall. From the beginning, there was a substantial disagreement with the owner. It got worked out with the land acquisition agent, and the owner's having 12 trees replaced, which is almost half of what the owner's being paid as far as the settlement in this matter. There was an attachment behind the resolution that we put into your tablets that showed how we calculated the total of $7,660 that we settled with Ms. Else for literally the last six months. She had an offer on the table of $7,400. I don't know really what turned the key on the extra $260, but we're happy to have her agreeable, and it will allow us to proceed to bids. So if there's any questions about the charts or the attachments, most of her conditions have to do with her trees and her yard and our restoration, so.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, council, through our final easement acquisition for Catherine Else at 1212 Cody Circle, $7,660 plus the other conditions and the $100 filing fee.
Will we approve?
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Michael?
Just want to tell John, good job. I know there's a lot of easements in this Step 2, and it's great that you brought them home to us. And Melanie?
Probably. You've got to get the paperwork done before you tell them, "Good job."
All right. That was a preemptive, "Good job."
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, now we'll move on to our final reading of our RagBri ordinance, 1175. Open up for the public hearing portion of this, to see if there's any public comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to pass the ordinance from the third to final reading.
Mayor, there's one-
If there's any discussion, we'll take it after the second.
There's a new line in here from the other two readings that I need to cover. It's on page 3, under section 19, certain ordinance is suspended. The highlighted portion is new. This came after the signage committee had reached out to the city seeking permission to post some signage on places that it's currently not prohibited, or not allowed under law. And it would be very difficult if we were, if the committee had to make new signposts for some of these, so we're asking, including in some of the other ordinance that are suspended for that night, including allowing consumption of beer in city parks, that's withheld, noise from outdoors, entertainment is withheld, allowing people in the parks after 10:00 p.m. and to camp. Those are the three that were in the other two readings. We're adding city ordinance, that is about general regulations and preventing signs shall be suspended and not be enforced, that allows RagBri committee-appointed member, appointed people to place information and directional sign-ins where it's most visible and prominent. So that may include utility poles, and that's just because you got to put up a lot of signs for these riders to direct them where they need to go. So that's an amendment that would be new for consideration.
Okay, so just one quick question.
Yeah.
So when we do all of this, which I agree with, it sounds like, will there be someone checking for safety and make sure there's no concerns in that direction, I suppose?
Daryl Visgard is on our committee, as is Julie Cancela, the lieutenant from the Police Department, as is Scott Vaughn, as is Pam Craft. So the city is very well represented at RagBri and will be an integral part of all this stuff.
Michael, sir, just one thing, will there be a timeframe? Will we close down the square? Or would Sean want to find out when we can close that down and put our kibbutz in?
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't cover that, but we'll come and request when we want to do that. The ordinance does allow the city to close certain streets during that time period without notice, but we'll give notice for what Daryl's talking about, which is the downtown area.
Okay. So then entertain a motion to approve the amended ordinance for its third and final reading.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Two-Hill. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Counsel, in my report, to just let you know that we are submitting a Great Places redesignation application, which is due by May 1st. That'll be submitted by the end of the week, and we should know sometime in June. We are receiving this redesignation, which would, the application is going to be focused mostly on the downtown and all the different community organizations that have work and input in that area, and this will open us up for grant applications that can be tailored to a lot of our downtown projects. That's everything. Then we'll move to committee report, and at that point, I'll ask Councilman Flornoy to talk about the information that he provided to each council member regarding the statement on civility.
Thank you. After last Friday's meeting, I was motivated to go back and find this PDF that was acquired at a meeting at the University of Northern Iowa last year from a lady there who runs the American Democracy Project on this statement on civility and how one should conduct themselves when discussing in public controversial issues, for example, where you have maybe strong disagreements with another individual at a meeting. If you look at this sheet on the front, what is civility, and it gives you, this is the front, statement on civility. So on the far left-hand side, it lists what civil behavior looks like and what uncivil behavior looks like. I think everybody here at the council was behaving in a very civil fashion on Friday. I think we had some uncivil behavior in the members of the public. In the middle here at the top, it says why people don't listen to opposing points of view. And when you flip this over, it gives some more information on civil dialogue amidst controversy and benefits of understanding both sides, but there might be more than two sides, of course. So my suggestion, and we are saw an example of what uncivil behavior, I think, led to, is that this decision that we voted on, the switch from 250 to 1,000, was rushed and not done under the most ideal conditions. So I think we made, you know, an error there. But in any case, I was going to suggest that we maybe lift some information from this and maybe add some other information. I think Mayor Malloy suggested we add some information about Robert's rules.
Yeah, what is a public hearing and what is not a public hearing?
And then maybe attach it to the request to speak to the council, and then if we think it's advisable, have these on the seats of chairs when we expect a big crowd, or have it available anyways, so people could have this kind of information available to them, we can make it clear to them before we start the meeting that this, this is the way we conduct a meeting, and this is the way they should behave, and this is the way we should behave, so it's very clear. So I would just like the council's input on that, I guess, and see if we could come up with something.
What committee does that?
Jason, I have to move this down a little bit, so. Thank you. City Administrator Mike Harmon and I worked on something for the council, and there's a little laminated, two-sided kind of reminder to people how to behave when they- laminated, two-sided kind of reminder to people how to behave when they speak that's under the podium or perhaps on it, which is maybe a little too late by the time they get there. I don't think most people are reading. So I like the idea and actually I was keen on it of having it included when someone brings the request to address council. So then it's with that form and now they have, obviously, over the weekend, because you have to fill that out by Thursday morning, I think, to be on the council, that they would get that then. So great idea. I think it would be really helpful. And we could print some out, maybe leave them on the chairs of the table.
I like the idea.
Can't vote on it?
No.
No, we're not going to vote on anything, but I'll go ahead and put something together, bring it before you at a later date for final approval or see if it's something we can use in our council meetings.
And we'll look at the Robert's rules portion also because I think that's part of where the frustration starts is that people, they believe that everything is a public hearing and that they, you know, can be acknowledged from the chair at any point at any meeting. And I think we just need to describe, you know, what it is and what they should expect and where the public hearing opportunities are and where they aren't. And I think that'll be helpful to sort of set the stage for people understanding what kind of meeting they've come to and then following it with the expectations that you're providing, I think, would be very powerful.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, we'll move to our administrative reports and I think we'll start with Erin, who's provided a memo for the council regarding something that we should all be thinking very deeply about.
Last week, Thursday, I went up to Des Moines to listen to the debate regarding Senate Study Bill 1260, which is a rewriting of our property tax code. Completely throws out everything that we're used to as far as property taxes and completely rewrites everything to where it becomes one great big pot and then limits how much you can grow according to a percentage and not according to the valuation of the community as you grow by valuation. The important thing is that they put healthcare and capital improvements and as I look on the spreadsheet, which is the last page in your packet, they have the general liability property and self-insurance costs along with ag land, emergency levy, employee benefits along with the capital projects benefits are all lumped into one under the new system. Police and fire retirement, FICA and IPRs, and then the debt service levies are left outside in a different fund. But if you look at our overall growth over the last six years, we've actually had pretty reasonable growth. And then when you take out everything and put it under the new system, we would never get to the levels that we need to to fund the services that were required to under this new system. And so Michael Haley responded to Representative Shipley with, no, we don't like this. I sent an email to Representative Schiffley also, and the mayor sent a response also that we all are in agreement that this is not a good system for the city of Fairfield. After sitting through the Senate side of this, I don't have any change in opinion, whereas it's still a negative for the cities. It violates home rule. It violates a lot of things that a lot of us hold near and dear as city government employees and elected officials, trying to do the best things we can for our citizens and providing the services need be, that we need to. So feel free to, if you haven't had a chance, I know a number of you have, some of you haven't had a chance to read through my memo because I didn't get it sent out until late this afternoon. Feel free to read through it. If you have any other questions, give me a call. I'll be happy to answer as best I can. I'll keep a watchful eye on the Senate to see if this comes to vote. The mayor does a good job of that, too, so we'll both be keeping a good eye on it.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Has any of this been shared with Shipley or other representatives?
Not the spreadsheet. I put that together today also.
That's a pretty remarkable piece of information. I think they should be aware of it.
I'll be happy to. I was going to send that to him tomorrow.
The League is also weighing in on this and is trying to fight this also, but, you know, you can also kind of see where, I think the people behind this bill understand that there are going to be special interests like the League of Cities that are going to come out against this and they're not really listening very closely. There doesn't seem to be much of a dialogue going on between the formers of this bill and the League of Cities. So I think individual cities really do have to step up and tell their legislators what's going on. Our state senator, Miller Meeks, responded to Erin that, you know, she heard a few times knocking doors during your campaign that people are concerned about property taxes. Well, of course, I think we're all concerned about property taxes. But, you know, we are probably the most transparent level of taxation that there is. I mean, our budgets are pretty easy to decipher. We have discussions about where we're making our investments and the number of people that we're employing to provide the services that people want and respect. We have public hearings through Ways and Means. We have public hearings here at the council and generally, we don't have people show up to protest our budget. If they did, you know, we're happy to oblige. You know, what is it that you want less of? Do you want less hours at the library? Do you want less activities for children through park and rec? What is it that, you know, that you want? And if people feel strongly enough about that, we can accommodate that at any point. We try to budget with the dollars that we are allowed. We try not to use or overuse the levies that are provided to us. We only use the ones that are really essential to us. So our level of transparency for how we budget, in my opinion, does not need fixing. And I think this is just coming a little bit out of left field in terms of, you know, coming down to cities and counties and saying that we want to reform how it is that you make your budgets. We are making our budgets quite well and we're doing it transparently and we're doing it based on what people expect of us within our communities. And I would, you know, recommend, because this is going to be a short time, if, you know, if the council feels strongly about it, if you haven't really looked at the issue closely enough yet, I understand, but we were to put together a letter basically protesting this as a council, I think it would be a very powerful statement to the legislature and to the House and the Senate for, you know, what they're going to be doing and what they're going to be creating in terms of, you know, this change. Just make one last point. You know, it was the rationale seven or eight years ago that, you know, reducing commercial property taxes scaled back over a five-year period of time would stimulate commercial development in cities across the state. Well, that has not happened. And, you know, small rural communities and cities are having to budget or going to have to budget soon with less dollars because of that alone. So once again, you know, at the state legislature level, they're making, you know, determinations in cities about what's best for us and we have to live with the consequences. If anybody feels that, you know, putting a letter together to represent the whole city, be happy to work on that.
One other note, the city of Bettendorf put together a resolution and passed a resolution against this. And I'll pull that up and give everybody a chance to read that. To note, you know, one of the comments that Senator Feenstrid said was, well, property taxes keep rising. Well, if you look at our city budget, over the last five years, our tax levy has gone down. And of course, then they go, well, you know, valuations have gone up and, of course, it's interesting how the city and county, even the county assessor has very limited control over assessed values. It's all controlled at the state, but yet they want to throw that back on us and say, well, it's our job to control our budgets, which we are already doing.
But we have a process where the public can have all the input it wants on our budget and tell us no and tell us what they don't want. And we're perfectly capable of managing that system right now and we don't need it curtailed based on a general overarching philosophy that people aren't happy about property taxes.
I concur. And one of the point is that the 2% soft cap and 3% hard cap aren't based on any sort of real numbers. That was, seems to be arbitrary. It's not based on growth. It's not based on any sort of index that's out there. It seems to be something someone just essentially made up.
I think it's a good point. And the results of the spreadsheet that Erin put together really shows how volatile it can be from one year to the next. And I think that's data that the committees don't have at this point, so I don't think they're really fully informed on what they're going to be doing to cities. So at this point, we don't have a resolution prepared. Time is probably of the essence. Would the council be in favor of approving a letter echoing the points that we've made tonight?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Haley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other questions, comments, anything else you'd like to see in it? Okay. Please call the roll.
Haley?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Grassmanson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes. Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then our final agenda item would be project report. Melanie?
So during your whole discussion on budgeting, I was looking through the project list and outside of local funds, we probably have five different funding sources that are outside. So our use of grant programs and loan programs on the state and federal level are well represented even in the few projects that we have going on right now. Probably the biggest news, as John Morsey said, is that we have our last easement in order to move forward with step two. But we have a lot of other projects, some starting, some finishing. This week, we saw seeding on Adams, that paving project. We'll see seeding on 227th and the wastewater equalization basin as they're all the same subcontractor. These projects were all hydroseated where the seed and the mulch is all meshed together or whatever, so it kind of looks like there's green goo on the ground. I know every year, we normally get some questions about that, but so I just let you know that's what's happened on Adams and 227th. On Tyler and step one, we still have seeding to be fixed, but I don't have a date on that. We do not have a start date for Libertyville Road, the city hall remodel, or Petra's Place Park. All of those are under contract and moving forward, just don't have a construction schedule yet. Fillmore and Madison Avenue Water Main is progressing nicely. We had sanitary sewer issue in front of Washington Elementary this morning, but we appreciate the school working with us and no one went without water or sewer for any amount of time, but it could have gotten worse and we appreciate everyone working together quickly to keep it from getting worse. So that project's continuing. We have Madison from Main to D closed to through traffic. Fillmore is currently open. And then we also have, the city crews started on Water Main replacement on Highland. This is from Jackson to Harrison. So it's one block. Again, we've got that street closed to through traffic while the city crews are working in that area. And that is all.
Great. Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Council, any other business for the council this evening? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned.